Call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen, April 19, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer read by Selectman Ward.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals and of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. And now we'll move to our public comment period. This is a period of 10 minutes that we reserve at the start of each meeting, allowing residents to take three minutes to speak to an issue they'd like to address with the board. We do ask the residents to be brief in what they have to say so that we can make room for other residents. Were there any residents that wanted to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Mike Tassanari, 12 Mattello Street.
Please come up to the table.
You know what? I'm gonna give you the chair. How about that?
Hello, can you hear me?
Just again, your name and address again, please.
Mike Tassanari, 12 Mattello Street. An area of concern is the redevelopment authority's new suggestion to take some of our property by eminent domain. I'm just curious, is that a result of something going wrong with the project on Wentworth property? And why is there only one plan, not two or three options for the town? It seems like it's already decided that this is the only plan we're gonna go with. Although, it's all new to me. Every time I've found out about something going on with the redevelopment, it's been from a resident in Plimpton putting something in my mailbox. So I'm just kinda curious, and along your prayer, Dick, that was very good. The Pledge of Allegiance, I like that. I'm a veteran.
Thank you.
I worked hard to buy that property. I settled there. I like the way it is. I know there has to be some changes, but it seems like just a done deal already.
Yeah, this board is not intimately involved in that, but I'll share with you because when I heard that there had been-
Well, I'm asking you to be intimately involved.
I understand, but in terms of authority, it's not, you know, it may eventually, we may play some role in it. But at this point, if I could just summarize what my understanding of where things are at. The meeting that occurred last week was not even a public hearing. That was just an early meeting in which people were invited to come forward. I thought it was a good idea to try to, before we even get to the public hearing aspect, to just start airing it out and having some discussion about things. As I understand it, as it's been explained to me, no decisions have been made. The attempt of mentioning eminent domain was just to say, that's one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is there doesn't have to be any land takings at all, and everything in the middle. So that everything, as far as I know, is still in the discussion period, and no final decisions have been made, and it's a long way to getting to eminent domain, and since that's gonna have to be a town decision, I don't think eminent domain would be approached lightly in any way, shape, or form in taking people's lands, so.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, because we can't really discuss it because it's not on our agenda, but I will tell you that during selectman notes, I am gonna be mentioning this because I have a request I'm gonna make during selectman notes concerning this subject.
Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna, I'm not planning to discuss it, but I do want to make two factual points that people may not be aware of, well, actually, three. One is that the redevelopment authority is actually a separate entity from the town of, from the town of Carver. And we're, it's part of us, but it's separate as well. That's just an aside. The other point is that, not that eminent domain is a good thing, but if any of that ever did happen, they would have to pay market value for the property. They couldn't just take it without, not that, I understand, it's not, you know, you'd rather keep your property than get the money, but they would have to do that. And finally, Ron mentioned a public hearing versus just a regular meeting. At the public hearing, you should be getting a notice if you earn a butter to the property in the mail, which will tell you about the public hearing. And you actually have the right to speak to the redevelopment authority during the public meeting. The chair has to do that. That's part of a public meeting's requirements. A meeting like they had before was good. They got it out there, but technically, in those kinds of meetings, just a regular, open meeting, the chair doesn't have to recognize anyone in the audience. So, the public meeting is definitely a place where you can air your concerns to the chair of the redevelopment authority.
And, Mr. Tassanari, just so you know, open meeting laws limit how much we can discuss things that aren't on our agenda, so we can't go into too much more depth. The only thing I want to provide to you, though, is assurances that I think all the members of the board, while we may, we may play a limited role in the ultimate, in the actual ability to make a decision, we will certainly be involved every step of the way in speaking with people and making sure that the process is fair and that the result is satisfactory to everyone involved.
Right, but I'd like just maybe some help or input to see more than just one option, more than just the one plan, you know what I mean? It seems like we're limited. And now this is already out there, so regardless what us as homeowners do, one, the value of our property is limited. We wouldn't even be able to really disclose, hey, this may be taken by eminent domain. It's already out there, so the value has already changed. People aren't gonna wanna buy my house and say, oh, boy, maybe eight months down the road.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go up now. Maybe put your mind at ease a little bit. As has been stated, this is just preliminary. It's just basically at the idea of ideas. And I'm gonna ask during selectman time that if maybe we could have the chairman of the RDA just come before the board and just let us know what the status is so we can dispel the rumors, because there are, there are a lot of rumors out there, there's a lot of hearsay out there without any real facts, because there are no facts yet. There's only planning. Preliminary plans always change from one extreme to another, because part of the planning process is you need to take an extreme from one end to the other and meet somewhere in the middle. So if we could maybe get the-
I think that's, Carrie, can you make a note to have that request at one of our next meetings? And you do make an excellent point, though, that once the news is out there, if you were looking to sell your house right now, there's no question it impacts your ability to sell until there's clarity in terms of what the end result's gonna be. So, all I can do at this point is pledge that we will pay attention and be involved.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Milonowski?
And if I could, just to address that last item, I know that the consultants are working on four different alternatives based upon some very informative comments that came out of the last public hearing. So at the next, or public meeting, the next meeting, you will most likely see multiple alternatives, and it's what they're gonna be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other residents that wanted to speak tonight? There being none, move to next item on the agenda, which is the adoption by the Board of Selectmen of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'd ask Tom Walsh to step forward, and if you could identify yourself and the role you're playing in this, Tom, please.
I'm Tom Walsh, I'm the Emergency Management Director. Want to give a little bit of background here. As stated, the purpose here tonight is to get signatures on that piece, that adoption form that I gave to the chairman. The process, basically, the federal government says everyone has to have a hazard mitigation plan. Everyone throughout the whole country, counties, states, towns. And the first hazard mitigation plan Carver had was in 2004, and it was adopted right after I began as Emergency Management Director. And it was essentially a plan that was done by SERPID, our Economic Development Council, and then tailored to the communities that were, that adopted it. And it was good for five years. Then in 2009, it expired, and SERPID decided not to partake in the federal grant that they would have had to apply for in order to do the same thing again. And I was very naive and thought that, well, things really haven't changed. We'll just update ourselves. I asked the Board of Selectmen to put together a committee, which they did. Sarah and I are the only ones remaining who still work for the town that were on that committee. And much to our surprise and disappointment, the five years that we thought things hadn't changed, the federal government had spent all their time producing a book of changes. And as it turned out, what was adopted in 2004 never really did meet their standards. So, the process is that we go to MEMA, and then MEMA, if we can get it past them, goes to FEMA. So, we made changes, we sent them to MEMA, they came back, they came down and met with us on two or three occasions. We got it past MEMA twice, but then it bounced back from FEMA, who are really experts, are expressing themselves in such a way that you really don't even know what they said. And so this period went on, it sat for many periods. I mean, I'm just trying to explain why it took five or six years. There was a whole year that it got lost at MEMA. When you get, when you get a, when you get a series of disasters, everyone turns to those disasters, and they no longer have time to be working on this type of stuff. So it kind of fell through the cracks, if you will, in a lot of areas. We finally got to the very end, and the only one that stayed with the project was Sarah. And, and I'm not, you know, I worked 34 years in the insurance industry. I've run the EMS service for 30 years, been the Emergency Management Director for 11, been in charge of FEMA recovery efforts. Bureaucracy is not something that is foreign to me, but this is unique. This is a unique, and it was beyond my bureaucratic tolerance levels, to be quite honest. But not beyond Sarah's. And Sarah hung in there, and through, at the end, we were just wordsmithing. I mean, we had conference calls on whether we were gonna label a column timeframe or timeline. You know, it got to that level. And, but Sarah did a great job in the end, did get it together. Our latest person that we worked with from MEMA did a great job. And we now have it adopted, approved by FEMA. The only thing remaining, without changing a period, a comma, or anything, is to have it adopted, and that's what we're here to do tonight. Then I can send it to FEMA, and then we're good for five years. And I, and what this, the carrot to this, is the only reason to do this, really, is because it makes you eligible for certain mitigation grants, all right? My personal opinion is that they should only require these plans if you are a community that has water problems, whether you have rivers flooding, or whether you're a seaside community or whatever. These are the type of things you can mitigate. You can build dams, you can build levees, you can do things. It's hard to mitigate a nor'easter, a blizzard, a hurricane, an earthquake. So, our mitigation efforts, once you've got good building codes and you've done everything you can to reach out to the public, and you have a good shelter plan, and you're really prepared for these things, there's not much you can do to mitigate it. But this 104 pages says how we're gonna do it. And so I really want to thank Sarah for all of her efforts, and I'm glad this is over, and I will not be doing it again.
Any comments from the board?
If I may, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Tom. It was a real pleasure working on it with you, as tedious as some of those commas and timelines and timeframes. I always told Tom, of course, it would be just our luck if we didn't update it, then all of a sudden, they would require it for the money we get back for hurricanes and, you know, more Easters.
Right, and that was always the danger, that even though we never thought, we probably would go for a mitigation grant, but they could attach it to disaster, disaster recovery or firefighter assistance grants or something like that, so.
Because you know how they change the rules next year.
How long will this be good for?
Another five years, right?
This is good, this gets us-
This is good for five years.
So to 2021?
Correct.
Okay.
Wow, you can add. I'm impressed.
Mr. Chairman, I won't make a slight comment.
I couldn't refuse.
First off, Tom, I want to thank you so much for the hard work in you also. Sarah, I know you've worked well as a team. My only thing is, if this, we sign it, it's good for five years, that means you can start tomorrow and work over the next five years for the next one.
Yeah, we'll be doing that, Al. You can be sure that that'll be-
It's very comprehensive, and I wouldn't want to attack that, so, again, thank you so much for your labors, you and Sarah.
Thank you.
And this has been out on the webpage with a red banner saying, "Read it, give us your comments," since we had the new webpage, so I think it goes back to October. My phone hasn't been ringing, so.
Can't imagine why.
The public's had plenty of time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did someone want to make a motion to approve and certify and adopt the mitigation plan?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to thank Sarah and Tom for their work on this.
It was a pleasure.
That's tedious stuff, way beyond me.
It can be. It's a good thing Tom was there, though, because he kept us laughing.
But, no, and I'll add my thanks. I know Tom had told me a month ago, when we first got news, that this had been accepted, about all the work that you had done to make this happen, so thank you for your efforts, and thank you, Tom, as always, for everything you've done. Why do I feel this might be the final thing, that you might actually think that it's time to retire before having to go through this again?
Not acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely not acceptable.
It's the final time that we'll be coming here to talk to you about this.
All right, we have a motion to certify and adopt this town of Carver Hazard Mitigation Plan. Being no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, they need signatures. I'll pass this.
The last thing, I just want to take a moment here, since this is Dick Ward's last meeting as a selectman, to thank Dick for his service and for his service on the board. It's been a pleasure to come to this board, knowing that you were there. You're always the guy who shows up in the EOC in the middle of the blizzard, showing your interest, and I just have always appreciated your support, both in emergency management and in emergency medical services, and just wanted to thank you for your service to the board, Dick.
Thank you, Tom, and the reason I was there was because you run a good ship, and I've always felt that we should be supporting a good ship.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right, Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, and we're also lobbying favor to do this annually, so you can come back here and do your stand-up comedy once a year?
This is my-
Tom, you want it?
Sure, if you have it on sight, thank you.
Then we move to the Town Administrator Update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Two quick things before I get to the appointments of, that are subject to the Board of Selectmen's approval, is, is I just want to take a moment and just, again, go back to the Urban Renewal Plan. There was a public meeting held by the Redevelopment Authority. Sarah's correct, they're an independently elected board within the town. They're a separate governmental body. At that meeting, there was a lot of discussion. The members listened intently, as well as the consultants, and the public is gonna see some revisions to the plans based upon some of the comments that came out of that meeting. So although it may have been a difficult meeting for some, it actually served, you know, part of its purpose by educating the members a little bit more, so that they are going back and updating the plan. And, again, they're implementing the master plan that was approved by the town, which calls for development over there, as well as zoning for that. So, again, you will be seeing some modifications to those plans the next time there is a meeting on that. Going to the agenda, the Commission on Disabilities, we have in our bylaws that we have to have a certain number of members on the commission for disabilities. Unfortunately, we don't have enough members, so I just want to emphasize, above and beyond the normal requests for volunteers, we are looking for some additional members to serve on that commission. If you know of anyone that would be interested in volunteering, please have them contact our office.
Through you, Mr. Chair. How many members are we short?
We're short two.
And does that, excuse me, does that, is there any funding that we may be missing out on if we don't fill that, fill that committee?
I'm not aware of any, but I'm also, I can't answer that question, whether we are or aren't.
It would be really urgent if we, if it is.
I just know that one of the members that the board recently appointed this past fall has been trying to have a meeting, and we don't have enough to have it. And in our bylaws, it's a, it's one of those committees that requires a minimum number of people attend a meeting. It's not just a sitting majority.
But how many times a year does that committee meet, or is it supposed to meet? Or does it add up to the committee?
Since I've been here, I'm not aware of a meeting at all. It is supposed to meet, I believe, quarterly.
So it doesn't seem like there's a lot of workload involved, but it's an important committee that really needs to be filled. So I would just ask anybody, either, you know, watching right now on Area 58, or reading about this in newspaper article, if you want to, you know, here's a chance to go ahead and get your foot in the door of, you know, helping the town out and serving your fellow residents. So I really sincerely ask that you consider going ahead and joining, getting into that committee.
Mr. Chairman, the next item that I have is two appointments that are subject to the Board of Selectmen's approval. And as background, in your packet in front of you, the first two pages, you have a copy of the municipal finance home rule legislation that was passed at town meeting, that lays out the structure of the committee, and this is important more so from just making sure that all the laws are appropriately assigned, so that the finance director has the full authority to do what's in their jurisdiction, as well as the treasurer collector. Having said all that, that is more fine tuning of the structuring that took place. However, with the, with the voting of the new org chart and the wage and classification plan, we can now move forward with implementing the finance department as included in our new budget effective July 1st. So with that, we have two appointments in front of you. The first is for, and this one is a time-sensitive appointment, is for the treasurer collector's position. As you may recall, two years ago, town meeting eliminated the elected treasurer collector and made that an appointed treasurer collector's position. During the remaining of that term, the treasurer collector was to report to the town administrator until that term expired. That term expires with the next, with the election coming up on next Saturday. Having consulted with our auditor, Department of Revenue, as well as different consultants that we brought in to assist the migration of the treasurer collector's office, and with our town accountant, I am making a recommendation today, following a meeting that I had with the chair of the finance committee and the chair of the capital outlay committee, which is required that I consult with them on this appointment, and I am making a recommendation that we appoint Paul Lanute through the FY '17 budget cycle as the treasurer collector to continue to move forward with some of the migration changes that we've been doing. So again, I am, I am making that recommendation to you. The Board of Selectmen has 15 days to accept or reject that appointment based upon the bylaws.
It's a pleasure, the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Paul Lanute as our treasurer collector.
I'd like to second that.
And that'll be for the term specified.
For the term specified.
Do we have to use the 14 days? We can-
Well, no, if we do it now, then it's, we've accepted it.
Yes, you have to, 15 days to reject the appointment. But you can choose to accept the appointment, and then that stops the 15 days.
Mr. Chairman, given the time-sensitive nature of this appointment, I don't think we need to use the 14 or 15 days since the election is Saturday, and I fully endorse and support appointing Paul Lanute to this position.
And just to be clear, Michael, can you say again what the term length is?
It'll be through the FY '17 fiscal year.
Okay.
So it'll be till June 30, 2017?
That is correct.
Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous.
Congratulations, Paula.
Congratulations, Paula.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula.
Secondly, you know, tied in with the reorganization of the finance department, and in a position that we put Meg LaMay in with her reappointed town accountant contract, which is in your packet. During that contract, we asked her to step up and assume some of the roles as a typical finance director would be as the town accountant, and that was built into her last contract. Obviously, she has succeeded in helping pull the finance team together, and again, now with the appointment and the restructuring that was approved by town meeting, I am also making a recommendation to appoint Meg LaMay as our finance director slash town accountant as we move forward with this migration. I think that this has been well received by our financial advisors, and it's something that I think rounds out the team and puts us on a steady course to continue to implement all the financial improvements the town's made over the last couple of years. And I'm looking forward to her filling that role. So with that, I'd like to make that appointment as well.
What was the term?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna ask the term.
Sure, so the term with that is based upon the town accountant's contract. That would be for a five-year term. This is one of the positions that is allowed for a five-year term. And that would be effective July 1st, carrying out five years from July 1st.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
To appoint Meg LaMay.
Further discussion?
We probably should have asked when Paula, we were discussing Paula, too. Meg, would you want to come up and say something, or are you just happy back there?
Meg is on vacation today, it's school vacation week.
Oh, well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me. No, I just wanted to say that I am really glad to be here on the town of Carver, and I've really appreciated the time that I've had here, and I look forward to, you know, working, hopefully, as the finance director, and also to thank everyone in the finance department offices, because I think everyone has really come together as a team and really worked together to improve communications and to work together and improve how we're operating, so.
You've been fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've even put up with some of my questions.
Anytime.
Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Meg.
Paula, on a retro basis, did you want to come forward and say anything? Just to be fair?
I always want to be the anchor. I'd like to say thank you very much to the board for accepting the recommendation, and I solemnly swear that I will do the best of my ability to continue what I am doing. I'd like to go further than a year, and I'm hoping that that, I will get that chance.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, speaking of solemnly swearing, because there are appointed positions, they don't need to be sworn in by the town clerk?
No.
No.
I would think not, because they are appointed positions, but I felt I need to ask.
Right, it's, some towns do it as a formality, but I don't believe there's a requirement to do that.
It may be worth running it by the town clerk just to be on the safe side.
We'll double check on that. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, just one other quick note, is that with the new, with some potential changes coming with the Board of Selectmen in our next meeting, we do have, on an annual basis, we do bring in a facilitator to meet with the Board of Selectmen and talk about your goals for the next fiscal year. So I'd be like, looking to try to set that up sometime near the end of May. Just, again, a date that's convenient for everybody, and we'll bring in Jeff Nutting again to have this discussion. And I'm also going to ask Jeff to reach out and have some individual meetings with some of the key department heads in town, too, just so he can get a flavor of what's happening behind the scene, as our next couple of years are gonna be really to fine tune the implementations that, of the restructuring that has occurred.
All right, I know I talked to Sarah, we would, I guess I was thinking, and we mentioned the other day at our executive board session about setting goals and objectives, but if we're doing that meeting, as long as they're in place prior to July 1st, that's, that's the important, so that's fine, so we don't, that takes a little bit off our agenda tonight.
In FYI, when you're scheduling, I'll be away May 20th or 21st.
Another vacation.
And Memorial Day's May 30.
This is work, believe it or not.
Where?
Long Beach, California.
Yeah.
It really is work.
Yes, would they, to get it done?
This might be a little bit out of the box, but, Mr. Milonowski?
Yes, sir.
Would it be beneficial to have Jeff meet with maybe at least- Would it be beneficial to have Jeff meet with maybe at least the school superintendent? And because I can't help but think, you know, given some of our past
Discussions?
Disagreed discussions with the school committee, that there could be some benefit there somewhere.
Absolutely. That was one of the key department heads that I wanted to meet with. And as you may recall, Jeff, as well as being the town manager Franklin, has served as a Board of Selectmen member. He's also been a school committee member in his prior life as well. So I think he brings a lot to the table with that. And, you know, I have shared with him, I saw him last week, some of the progress the town has made in how the superintendent and I are now working on this joint facility study committee. And so absolutely, I think that would be a key, key person for him to meet with.
Yeah, given that he's had been both a selectman and a school committee member, I believe he'd have a unique perspective to go ahead and bring to us and to the school committee or at least the superintendent.
Excellent. Okay. You're, you're all set now with the town administrator update?
Aye.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen update, we'll start with Ms. Maroni.
Thank you. Well, of course, I need to-
Hold the microphone a little closer, please.
Really? I just want to remind everybody that this is a very exciting time in Carver. Election day is Saturday, April 23rd. So I encourage you to go out and vote on Saturday. But more important, if you see something on Facebook and there's disagreement, please contact the persons involved because there's a lot of information that is being put out on Facebook that is not factual. So let's have a fair election, speak with the candidates, and vote on Saturday, April 23rd. It would be terrific. But most important, I wanted to thank Dick Ward. I got him a happy retirement balloon and not too often do you see that an elected official retires, but Dick Ward has served this town for so many years in every, pretty much every single capacity. But what makes this special to me is that when we first came together, we were seen as being on opposing sides. And I just want Dick to know that over the past few years, I've actually gone home with like tears of emotion in my eyes, how much he has helped bring the two sides in this town together. And it has become such a joy to work on this board since Dick has really worked to bring everybody together. I never appreciated in my life what the Wards, this card is for Dick and Judy, have done for this town. So I just really wanted to thank you. And to Judy, his wife, who I've seen in action now, she's the unsung hero that is at home that works by his side, not only for him, but also for this town. So I just want to thank you, Dick, for doing so much good for this town.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you very much. Kind words.
Alan?
Okay. Basically, I'd like to reiterate what Helen said. Saturday is town election, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Right.
Front double check. This is the chance for you to come out and select your leaders for either three-year term, five-year term, or whatever. I've always believed that it's, you know, a voter's responsibility to do as much research as they can about the particular candidates. Don't rely on innuendo, rumor, gossip, well, my neighbor said, or this person said. Educate yourselves, find out yourselves. If you have a question, every one of these candidates that are out there are open to talking to you. Contact them, ask them the questions, and make up your mind and make an informed decision of how you want to vote. Make sure you get to the elections. And once the election's over and you've, and the choices have been made, boards, school committee, board of selectmen, townspeople, we have to come back together again. Things get a little heated during the sometimes called silly season, the campaign season. Things are said that mayhats probably shouldn't have been said. So I ask that everybody in the town work, go back to what we've really been doing for the last two years. It's been great to see how this town is really coming together. There's still extreme ends, but there's more meeting in the middle. And more importantly, being able to agree or disagree without being disagreeable. But don't just listen to the first thing you hear. Do the research. And if you have a problem, talk to somebody about it. And so, like I said, get out there, support your candidate, but make sure, you know, I just ask that you have it be an informed decision. And now to Dick. Mr. Ward, you used to torment me to make sure, try to get me up that stupid rope when I was in school and you were my gym teacher. You never made it. Sorry about that.
You never made it up the rope?
No, 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 no. A physical specimen Marine, I've never been. But I've known Dick most of my life, right from grade school through elementary school through high school. It is hard for me sometimes to call him Dick and not Mr. Ward. But you have made, you know, Dick, in truth, kind of put the bug in my ear about, why don't you run for selectman? Well, the first time he wanted me to do it was the last time he ran, and I didn't think that was the proper time. But this is the last time, two years ago, he got me to run. And part of the, and it really, you know, there's difficulties when you're on a board of selectmen, but it's really been an enjoyable experience because we're working together. Yes, we have disagreements, but we're not disagreeable. We can go ahead and, you know, debate our particular sides, but when the vote is made, that's it. That is the vote of the board of selectmen, and I've always supported every one of those votes once it's been taken. And a lot of that is because of Dick Ward. And you've made, being part of this board, very enjoyable for me this past two years. And I want to thank you so much for all you've done for the town and for me personally on this board.
Thank you very much, Helen.
Sarah?
Well, everyone else has already said it all, except I want to particularly thank Dick for his role in getting us a new school that we've needed for how many years?
Ten.
At least, yeah. And there's, there's a lot more, Dick, but I think you know.
You and I go back the longest of the whole board.
Yeah.
Right.
So, thank you.
No, thank you, Sarah.
On a, on a different topic, I have to talk about this because it's coming up really soon. We want to invite everybody to Y-PAC's, what we're calling our staycation movie night. For those of us who don't go away on April school vacation, we're giving you something to do on Thursday night. It's going to be down at the middle high school in the auditorium. We're going to be showing a movie. Since this is going to be aired on cable, I'm not allowed to talk about the title of the movie, but let's just say it's really good.
You're not allowed to say it's the new Star Wars movie?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You probably shouldn't have either, but hey, it wasn't me.
He's a chair.
So this Thursday, the 21st, we're having a pizza at, at 6:00 and the movie's at 7:00. We're also not allowed to actually charge money for tickets, but we are allowed to ask you for a suggested donation of $5 per person. This is a fundraiser. For those of you who don't know what the Young People's Alliance of Carver is, Y-PAC is a, I think the town's very first youth organization specifically for after-school programs for middle school kids. And it's a very, very important organization for many reasons, one of which is that a lot of these kids' parents, both of them work, and the kids come home and there's an empty house and there may or may not be supervision. And it's just not a good situation for that age group. So we try to give them really, really good and fun things to do in a, in an organized way, but in the way they can make some good choices and, and learn a little self-esteem that some of them may not have. We got a good bunch of kids down there. We're hoping to get even more. And we're hoping a whole lot of people come out for this movie so that we maybe have to have a second showing. Wouldn't that be nice? So Thursday, 6:00, be there.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. My wife Sharon noticed that there was a public notice for a right-of-way maintenance. Ever, EverSource goes up and down their right-of-ways in a whole series of towns, and there's a list of almost 30, 40 towns here, Carver being among them, where they're going to be applying herbicides up and down the rights-of-way. I was going to see if we couldn't have the office staff maybe check with EverSource and try to get some sense as to when they're going to be hitting Carver so that we can alert residents as to when that application might be taking place. They're talking about handheld application of Garland 4 or Garland 4 Ultra and Escort XP to try to knock out poison ivy, vines, noxious and invasion, invasive species of target vegetation. So I just think it would be a public service to let people know when that might be taking place. So if I could pass that down. I was also going to mention that we have an election from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, but that's been pretty well covered. We have two contested races, two people running for one position on the board of selectmen and three people running for two positions for the school committee. Over the next year, I will periodically be talking about an initiative that's been adopted in 51 cities and towns, I believe so far in the state, and many of the towns around us are getting into it, which is the distribution of plastic bags in grocery stores. And basically, there are 51 cities and towns that have already banned the utilization of plastic bags. I think it's something we need to talk about. I know it engenders a lot of debate, but I think there are some, you know, I think the pros and cons need to be discussed and then Carver can make an informed decision as to what they want to do. So just sort of a early warning that there may be some, you know, updates on that as we move forward. It would require ultimately a bylaw at the town meeting in order to adopt such a, such a plan. I also am planning on still visiting this whole idea of trying to make sure that folks in town are up to speed on their civics. I think I talked before about, and I shared with some of you, the citizenship test that newly, newly, new American citizens have to take. And that, as I handed this out to a number of people, a lot of born and bred Americans were having some difficulty with some of the questions. So it's just, it's sort of a little passion of mine, and I think going forward, I'd like to continue to work on that and come up with some ideas, as well as working with the schools too. We talked about holding a presidential election for the kids in the high school and the elementary school. Somebody will be working on that with as well. A lot of people have come forward that want to help me with that and have to work through the auspices of the town clerk a little bit. So that's going to be coming up. And then finally, Mr. Ward, the shot put competition has not happened yet, but it will. The fact that you're leaving the board only gives you more time to practice the shot put. And again, to bore those of you that may have heard this before, and to bore those of you that haven't heard this before, Dick and I were both shot putters back in college, and we have been threatening to have a contest. And the shot puts have been age adjusted. The 12-pound high school shot moved to the 16-pound college shot. But as you enter various decades, the shot puts get lighter. Dick is at an 8.8-pound shot put now, and I'm at a 10.7-pound shot put now, so.
He just turned 60, so he dropped down on weight on his shot.
He is suggesting I waited until hitting the new decade before the contest took place, so.
You did.
Just want to mention that that is something that everyone in town can look forward to, and I know everyone's just on the edge of their seat waiting for that to happen. But no, I have had the pleasure, well, I've been on the board of working with two people that I just admire and hold up as role models. One was Reverend Bob Merritt, when he served on the board. The other is Dick Ward. I just can't say enough about the integrity, the, what I've learned from these people. And Dick in particular, just his presence, the respect, I could only hope to someday approach the level of respect that Dick Ward garners. And he's earned every minute of it. We're going to miss you terribly on this board. I know you're going to be around. We are not going to allow you to go off gently into that good night. You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, you got the school building committee going for a while now.
Hey, there's still a school to build.
Yeah.
That's, that's important.
And, and you, you, you know, you got the ag commission, there's a whole bunch of stuff. You're going to stay busy, we're going to keep you busy. And I also want to extend my thanks to Judy. I got to know Judy as I've gotten to know Dick. And I think Helen's suggestion that she's sort of the unsung hero. I mean, Judy is just, she's literally a force of nature, as Dick well knows. And so to Judy, I, I give all my love and respect as well. But Dick, we are going to miss you terribly, but you're a tremendous example to, I think, everyone in the town and elsewhere as to what it means to be a public servant. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
And now, Mr. Ward, it's over to you.
Okay. How long do you want me to take?
If you go another 10 minutes, I get a cup of coffee.
I, I want to thank the people of the town of Carver because they've elected me all along. I spent a one year, a one, one term, three-year term back in the early 70s when I first came to Carver, when we had a three-man board, a three-person board. And then my kids, they voted me out. They said, Dad, you're spending too much time at the town hall and not enough with us five kids. So that was the end of that. So then I was serving, I served as town moderator for a few years. I served on the recreation committee, I served on the finance committee, I've served on a lot of different committees, then came back as a selectman. This is my, this completes my ninth year in this era. And so, so as I've come to work with the selectmen, Sarah and I have worked the longest together, and I greatly appreciate Sarah, who I know loves and cares a lot about our town. And so then, it was a difficult committee for a few years. We didn't get along in many ways, and, and I, I felt stress of that all along. I would come to meetings and you would feel this anxiety feeling starting about 2:00 in the afternoon, wondering what was going to happen. And then two years ago, this board elected me as chairperson. And I'm not a great orator or a great leader or, I'm an old physical education teacher who has a strong voice at times in the gym. So I wondered, okay, how am I going to make out? And when I started to stumble, I had people helping me. This board, town administrator, Elaine Weston, our assistant town administrator, all helped me get through those times. So I, and I remember distinctly at the coffee shop, when it was a coffee shop next door, Alan came in one day and I said, hmm, Alan's retired from the fire department. He's, he's lived in town all his life. He's, so I said, Alan, why don't you run for selectman? Well, a couple of years later, he decided to do that. And so Alan, I greatly appreciate you. And Ron, you have been a person that I've leaned on a lot, and I really greatly appreciate your support when I did that. And so thank you for all the things that you've done. And Helen, you, you've come together very, I, I enjoy you as, as a selectman, as a person. I come to respect your, your comments, and so I thank you very much. Michael, thank you. I, I can't, you know, when I came on, I asked to be appointed to the building committee as a selectmen's representative because that's really one of the, the main reason I ran for selectman the last term. I know we needed a new elementary school, and I knew we had to find a way to bring the town together to do it. And so Michael came on and we went about, he went about it, appointing a building committee that was a cross-section of people, the community, parents, business people, school people, school support people. And, and it has been a strong, good committee that has asked questions, done a great job in the selection, I think, of our, our architect and our project manager, your ways of going about the finances, because the superintendent has been ultimately responsible for the education plan for this new school. And so Liz worked that through. She, she, she and the school committee did a great job with that. Michael came up and picked up the financial parts, which the selectmen are ultimately responsible for, and worked that through, and in many ways was thinking out of the box. And so we ended up building a school, a $50 million school, getting almost 60% And so, we ended up building a school, a $50 million school, getting almost 60% paid for by the state, and, and bringing the cost to the average homeowner down to $250 of an increase. So, you're building a $50 million school in our community, and it's going to cost $250 per household, and believe me, that is a hugely needed school. There's going to be two more years before the kids get to go in it. And the sad part is, it's only going to be the second, first kindergarten and pre-kindergarten to get, to go in it. So, the third, fourth, and fifth grade are going to graduate over the next three years right out of it, and aren't going to see the new school, and I feel bad about that. Some of the parents mentioned that because we were thinking about setting something up at the elementary school so the kids could see it, and one of the mothers said, "Oh, I don't know." She said, "I have two daughters that are going to be gone, and they're going to be sad." And I felt bad about that. But anyway, I'm sorry to go on so long, but Elaine Weston, I can't say enough about Elaine. She's, she's a very smart girl, she comes up and fills the gaps. She does a great job for us, and she's helped me immensely. So, thank you to the community, and thank you to you folks. Love you all.
Now, I thought when you made your decision to run the last time, it was because you got hugs from Amanda, Jessica, and Heather. That was what I had heard, but I could be wrong.
Well, if I stay on the School Building Committee, if you folks see that you would rather have me represent the Selectmen, continue on the School Building Committee, when we break ground for the new school, I might get some hugs.
Oh, God. Okay, so, next item on the agenda is the results of the Town Administrator evaluation. I'll just hand these out. I don't know if everyone printed them out, but a couple over that way. Here. Thank you.
Oh, you want to get more?
Okay. Good thing I printed out a bunch.
Michael?
Oh, and then I'll hand these out as well. This is copies of the proposed contract, subject to ratification. Carver Selectmen's Evaluation Summary of the Town Administrator for Fiscal 2016. The Board of Selectmen have established a policy of conducting an annual evaluation of the Town Administrator. The Board developed a format that reviews success in achieving goals and objectives for the Town Administrator set in various categories by the Board. The first is annual specific goals and objectives; the second, knowledge, skills, and professional development; the third, staffing, personnel, financial, and management relations; the fourth, leadership, board relations, and personal qualities; the fifth, community relations and communication. The Board rated the Administrator on the following scale for each of those categories: one, fails to meet expectations; two, needs improvement; three, meets expectations; four, exceeds expectations; five, far exceeds expectations. The result of our fiscal 2016 evaluation was to find that the Town Administrator scored an overall rating of 3.78, up from 3.41 in fiscal 2015. This result indicates the Town Administrator improved on an already excellent performance over the past year. In pursuing the Board's goals and objectives for fiscal 2016, it was another challenging year which saw Michael Melonoski's leadership and collaboration assist in the passage of the debt exclusion for the new elementary school, continued assistance in the construction of the new fire station, working with the Fire Station Building Committee, continued development and implementation of Board fiscal policies, reorganization of the Finance Department, exploring regional service opportunities, negotiating additional sources of revenue, openness to alternative approaches to traditional issues. It is the belief of the Board that the Town Administrator's efforts on behalf of the town's fiscal policies, OPEB obligations, and the new skilding project alone has resulted in the savings of millions of dollars to the taxpayers of Carver. The Board, again, is very pleased with the Town Administrator's performance, energy, and hard work. As part of the evaluation process, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator have agreed upon the following changes to his contract, which were voted on in executive session and need to be approved in open session this evening. A two-year contract extension, contract now expiring June 30, 2021. Merit increase of 3% given above the existing contractual obligation. This action results in having the Town Administrator's salary be more consistent with other applicable department heads under contract, and recognizes the considerable savings he's assisted in bringing to the town. It brings the annual salary to $127,783. Six-time buyback also is adjusted to be in alignment with other applicable department heads under contract. The Town Administrator agrees to extend his notice of discontinuing employment from 60 days to 90 days. Deferred compensation increased by 3%. And existing language on benefits was made consistent throughout the contract, and that was a revenue-neutral adjustment. The Board looks forward to working with the Town Administrator in fiscal 2017 as he implements the Board policy and seeks to achieve his fiscal 2017 objectives as set for him by the Board. What I'd ask, I guess, is a motion to approve the new contract in terms in a second, and then we can have discussion.
I make a motion to approve the new contract.
I'll...
You have to do it.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to make it clear that since I was unable to attend the meeting where the executives, the executive session meeting where the contract was discussed and the evaluation took place, I feel like I need to abstain.
Okay. Any other comments? I guess one thing I'd like to mention is that we're doing it at this time because Mr. Ward knew that he was going to be retiring, and he wanted to be part of this evaluation. And as we thought about it as a board, we recognized it makes sense that the evaluation be done, originally it was going to be put off and be done later in the year, but it makes sense, rather than have perhaps new members of the Board just come on board, suddenly having to make decisions about the Town Administrator and not having had a chance to work with him or her, that by doing it in this timeframe, then you always are going to have Board members that have had at least a year of interaction with the Town Administrator. So, that's how we, just, I just wanted to mention that that's how we sort of moved up the...
May I comment on that? The reason that I asked that was because I've worked extensively, probably more than anybody on the Board, with Michael over the past two years, starting with the appointment of the School Building Committee. And Michael was on that, I was on that, I worked with him closely. I used to go back and forth between the Superintendent and the Town Administrator on the agendas for those meetings, and the work that we went through, and many days of discussions in Michael's office, that he worked with me and helped me along in many questions. Then last year, I was the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I worked closely with Michael there, and he helped, he helped me get through a lot of things there. And so, the past two years, I've worked very closely with Michael, and I've, I've seen the, his value to our town. And so, I really wanted to be part of this evaluation process, and that was why.
And it also happens to make sense as well. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to know that the Town Administrator wanted to make any comment on our review of the evaluation or anything he wanted to say about that?
Be more than happy to, and thank you for the opportunity. You know, it's been a little bit over almost two and a half years since I, since I came to Carver. And, and with that, as Dick will remember, Dick's the reason, in my own mind, why I decided to come here. And having said that, Dick actually voted for another candidate at the time. And, and you may ask, well, why would you want to come, and why was he such an important factor? Well, it really comes to everything that you've all said about Dick, his integrity, the presence, a role model for someone who serves in public service, and, and an honest guy that analyzes every situation and is willing to change his mind if he sees new information that's going to cause a different outcome. And it's all based upon what he thinks is best for the community, and we need more people to follow in his footsteps to help the town. But having said that, and this has been a wonderful experience, I think that with this board, working together as you have been doing for the last two-plus years, with the department heads we have in the town, a few of them are here right now, we've accomplished an awful lot in a short period of time. And, and with that, you know, I thank you for the opportunity to help implement all the changes and the good things that we've done, and I, and I look forward to helping you implement those over the, over the next five years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Helen?
Michael, you know how I feel about you because I was one of the ones that supported you from day one, but...
As opposed to Dick.
That's why I'm joking, that he brought that up. But...
Why are you turning red, Dick?
What made it great, though, is, that's what made Dick special, not to, you know, digress away from you, that the other night when we were doing the town evaluation, giving us all our own feedback, Dick was willing to fess up and say, "I made a mistake," you know, that you had the courage to say that, and so, you know, and it was just really nice to hear that. But this town, I just, I, we couldn't do this without you, Michael. You have experience that is beyond what I ever imagined when we interviewed you. I mean, I knew you had financial finesse, but what you have saved the town in dollars, I just hope that everyone truly appreciates how we were able to get this school and to make it as affordable as possible, and the way you've brought the financial policies, et cetera, it's just unbelievable, and I hope you stay with us for a long, long time. Thank you.
I guess I'll just add that this is my, I'm in my fourth term, 11th year, with some interrupted service, and it wasn't until this year that I sat and listened to our audit report and heard an auditor say that the town of Carver, fiscally, is a peg above our peers, that the fiscal policies we have in place place us against towns of like size and quality, a level above them. And that was just, and there has been some, some pain, some arguing, some discussion as we've moved forward, and there's, and, you know, the town employees, you know, have, have taken a hit as we've had to move forward and make some difficult decisions, and so that, but to actually reach that point, working together, and again, Michael gets the credit for bringing the fiscal policies to the Board, the Board then adopted those policies and had Michael implement them. And then I'll also say, you directly look at what we advertised we thought the bond rating might be versus what we ended up getting. Again, direct feedback from our, our finance vendors was the fiscal policies of town, the way the town's being run, combined with, you know, Michael negotiating a couple of solo contracts to help, which are being directed to pay off the, the school bond, knocking $100 off of the average taxpayer's bill. And so, again, if, you know, as we, we've gone through the evaluation, Michael's not perfect, and we've discussed that as well, but what he brings to the table has put the town of Carver in a position where, you know, especially, it's not talking to OPEB and so forth, generations from now are going to appreciate what the, the pattern we've set now. So, that being said, what's the, we've got a motion made and seconded, if there's no further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Town Administrator's new contract in terms, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I have to abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's see, we move on now, well, we won't do the goals and objectives because we're going to have that meeting with Mr. Nutting, so we will wait for that.
We can do them all together.
We'll do them all together at that time, yeah. So, oh, I see what you're saying, yes, these are the Town Administrator's goals and objectives versus the Board's goals and objectives. Excellent point. So, we may not have saved that much time in there, though. What's the pleasure of the Board? Do you want to do them both at the same time, we get together with Mr. Nutting?
That is correct. That would be my druthers.
You didn't hesitate and answer.
No, I didn't.
I didn't notice any...
Do them later.
Okay, so, I guess the Chair has, has the general consensus of the Board at this point, in which case we will go to minutes. What's the pleasure of the Board?
We'll accept the minutes of April 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I need to abstain, I wasn't there.
Our next Board meeting will be on May 3, and that will be with a new member of the Board of Selectmen. And is there any need for an executive session this evening? There is none. In that case...
I move to adjourn.
We adjourn. Is there a second? Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Have a great week, and don't forget to vote Saturday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the high school.